I like to explain this meeting format. Tonight, we have our commissioner's staff visible on a video feed. Members of the public have been invited to comment in the We Were Speaks in advance of tonight's meeting. And are also able to participate live through web link or by calling in on the phone. You can find that information, our meeting agenda at we were speaks.org. All members of the public who are participating live have been muted. When it's time for public comment at the start of our meeting or as part of a public hearing, we will unmute all members of the public. And I'll ask you to speak in order based on the first letter of your last name. When we unmute the public, please keep background noise to minimum. You may choose to mute yourself through your own device. If you do not plan to participate at all this evening, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on channel eight or we were speaks.org. If you do plan to participate this evening when he speak, please first state your name clearly, spell your last name and give your street address for the record. The time limit proposed comment is three minutes per person. Speakers may not donate their time. When there are no more speakers, I will close the time for public comment and public participants will be muted again. We appreciate your patience with this virtual format as with our in-person meetings. Our hope is that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue and we appreciate your help in this process. Thank you. I'd now like to call the city of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for December seventeen twenty twenty or can I get a call members, please?
Alyssa Antle. Christine Disney here. Will Kearns.
Here.
Ari Crichiver. Daniel Larson.
Here.
Godal.
Here.
Gotheesambye.
Here.
And Janet Leo is absent tonight.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance once we see the flag. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue with our agenda, I'd like to explain how we'll be voting on items tonight. Once we have a motion and a second, all commissioners in support of the motion will be asked to raise their hands and to keep them raised and visible until the recording secretary acknowledges that they have recorded those votes. After voting, the recording secretary will read the results of the vote to confirm is recorded correctly. We use this protocol for any voting scenario tonight. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, the next item is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December third twenty twenty?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, we're now at the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. You will have maximum three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. Please give us your names, so your last name and your address. We will not unmute all participants. Please keep background noise to a minimum. If you don't plan to speak at this time, you may mute yourself through your own device. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
We have only one person joining us on the phone. So if anyone on the phone wants to unmute themselves, that you can do so by hitting star six.
Is there anyone else in the public like to speak on items not appearing on tonight's agenda? Okay, that will conclude the public forum. We will now move into the public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight. For the public hearing will be adding appropriate staff. When applicable, and the applicants to our video feed, the screens will be shared. The presentations are being made. They will remain a part of the video feed until the conclusion of the respective agenda items. After the presentation, the commissions will ask questions of staff and applicant, and then we will conduct a public comment portion of the hearing. This will be conducted in the same manner as earlier, but I'm reading all public participants. We typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing, staff, applicants in the public in this virtual meeting format. We're administering that oath in different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you're agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. I now open up case number Z O A dash twenty dash zero eight. A code amendment modifying chapter twenty-six of the Weavers Code of Law is concerned for the regulation of short-term rentals and ask for the staff report.
Planning Commission, happy holidays. Scott Cutler, Senior Planner, and I will be giving a brief presentation, but most of tonight is really about a question and answer from you. So I'll go right into it. City Council has given us direction to pursue regulating short-term rentals in the city of Wheat Ridge. And that actually started back in twenty eighteen when they created their twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen strategic plan. And then pursued some study sessions to look into addressing short-term rentals in the city. A short-term rental, as I define in the staff report, is a dwelling unit or a part of a dwelling unit that's used for lodging accommodations for transient occupancy for a period of less than thirty days. So commonly, they're found on web-based platforms like Airbnb, the RBO, Expedia, and they can really range from more of a vacation rental where you're renting an entire home to just a bedroom and a dwelling unit. They don't usually provide services. They're mostly just staying in someone's home, whether they're there or not. And they've been around for a really long time, but recently due to the rise of Airbnb, they have become a lot more popular and and cities have started regulating short-term rentals, whether permitting them or not permitting them. So in twenty nineteen, City Council gave staff the direction to move forward with drafting a short-term rental ordinance. They're aware that short-term rentals are currently out in the city, and we do not currently have any regulations about short-term rentals. So by default, they're actually not allowed at this time. But City Council has given us direction to move forward. We've had four total study sessions over the past year and a half. And then as recently as April this year, we presented an ordinance framework to City Council, and they gave us specific direction to move forward with an ordinance that will allow license and regulate short-term rentals in the city. So since April, we've met with multiple stakeholders, both in the city and then gotten consensus from council to move forward with specific ordinance points, which I'll go into later tonight. But playing has also engaged with a working group, including admin services in the city of Wheat Ridge, our finance division and purchasing agent as well, chief of police and patrol operations division chief from the police department, our chief building official from the building division, and of course, our city attorney. So we've had a pretty wide group of people working on this ordinance. And what I'm presenting tonight is specific to chapter twenty-six of the Code of Laws, which is related to planning and zoning, and that's and that's why you're involved with this portion of the ordinance. There is another portion of the ordinance, chapter eleven, which specifically discusses licensing. And how, you know, someone could get a license and and also how licenses can be revoked. That's designed to parallel our existing business license process in the city, and there are special licenses in the city. And this would be one of those special licenses. We're not going to get into those details tonight. Those are outside of the planning commission's jurisdiction. But the the majority of chapter eleven is related specifically to what constitutes a short-term rental application? And then how the city actually can issue the licenses? Everything else is going to be housed in chapter twenty-six, including all the definitions, and then what is actually allowed under this ordinance? Who gets to operate short-term rental and things like that? So I'll go ahead and go into that. Current code, like I said, is silent. We do estimate that there are about a hundred and sixty short-term rentals currently operating in the city of Wheat Ridge. That's pretty low compared to Denver, which is more of a tourist oriented market, and it's also pretty low compared to some tourist cities and mountains. But they are out there and due to the code silence, although they're prohibited, the lack of any language makes it specific to enforce upon them. So council gave us the specific direction to allow and license short-term rentals in the city so that we have some teeth behind our our ordinance and the ability to enforce on bad actors. So the proposed code is basically what I like to call a one plus one, where every person in the city property owner is allowed one short-term rental that they're allowed to operate. And that's a home that they do not currently occupy. So we'll call that a non-owner occupied short-term rental or a whole home rental, which is what I said in the staff report. And then an individual is also allowed to operate a short-term rental in a portion or room of a dwelling unit where they continuously reside in. So that would be considered a partial house rental. So we've got the whole home. Everyone is allowed one, and then we have a partial house where you're actually living there continuously, and you rent out a room or a couple of rooms in the home. The only exception to that rule would be in apartment buildings and commercial and mixed-use areas where there would be an increased allowance. This was specifically asked for by City Council because one short-term rental in a commercial district would have lesser impacts on neighboring properties. And it already, those own districts actually already allow hotels. So it would be necessary to prevent an apartment owner from converting all of the units to short-term rentals, but allowing a small number, in this case, for per apartment building in commercial areas would allow a mix of uses for long-term rentals and also short-term rentals. For actual short-term rentals, we are calling, and this is a term that's used nationwide. Anyone that's operating a short-term rental is a short-term rental host. And the short-term rental, the host in Wheat Ridge has to be the owner of the property. So if there's only one host per property, and each host is allowed the whole home rental, and each host is also allowed a partial home rental. For the hosts to operate a short-term rental, it's got to be located within a legal dwelling unit. So that does not allow short-term rentals in temporary structures. It also wouldn't allow short-term rentals and RVs or campers or sheds. It would have to be in a building that's a legal dwelling unit. It also has to be located in a building that meets building codes. So this has got to have working smoke alarms and things like that. We worked with our building official on what exactly we would need to require. Also, keeping in mind that these ordinances are really common, and a lot of this ordinance is taken from existing ordinances throughout the state and the country. We've also decided to limit at council's direction, short-term rentals and deed restricted housing, which would include affordable housing or income restricted housing. This is really common to prevent conversion of units where people really need to be living in them full-time to someone taking advantage of loopholes and operating short-term rentals. And then, of course, the property would need to meet minimum parking requirements for the zone district in which it's located. And if it doesn't, we would require the addition of one parking space before the license could be approved. So this is moving on from that. Want to talk about maximum number total in the city and City Council at its most recent study session gave a specific direction to include in the ordinance a limit on the total number of whole-home short-term rentals in each district. And this cap is calculated at a two percent of the total number of units within single and two-family dwellings in the district. So it would only apply to non-owner occupied short-term rentals, which means that someone's renting out their entire house. There that's subject to the cap. If you're living there on site all the time and you rent out just a bedroom, it's not subject to the cap. So it's it's designed to prevent proliferation of these large vacation rental style homes more than two percent, just to keep the total numbers down. And then if if the cap is reached in any district, a next applicant would be placed on a waitlist until there's a number that goes back down the cap. So we estimate that there's about fifteen thousand dwelling units in the city. We'll have to do more analysis when the ordinance is implemented. But that means a two percent cap would be about two hundred owner occupied, non-owner occupied short-term rentals total citywide. And then approximately forty to sixty per district, kind of depending on the population. So with that, I'll go into some of the other changes in the ordinance and then move along for questions and the public comment. But we're going to have to do a lot of modifications to the existing use chart, including adding definitions for short-term rental, which I described earlier, and then short-term rental host. We'll also have to update the use charts to allow short-term rentals as both permitted uses and accessory uses permitted being a whole home rental and then an accessory use being that partial home rental. And we also will have to modify some existing definitions to keep in mind the difference between a short-term rental hotel, which is less than thirty days and a long-term rental, which is over thirty days. So like I mentioned earlier, licensing, application requirements, advertisement requirements, and enforcement provisions are located in chapter eleven. Those provisions do require that all hosts obtain a short-term rental license, which will parallel the existing business license pro- process. Applications will have to include emergency contact information, some other certifications, including proof of ownership, and a description of the space used as a short-term rental. City Council also has requested as part of the application process that hosts are required to notify their neighbors. This is kind of on the honor system. But it's pretty common that there's either a formal notification from the city or a more honor system notification where if you're going to operate a short-term rental on your property, you need to let your neighbors know, and that's going to be part of the application process. So like I said, we're not really getting into the details of chapter eleven tonight. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that there's portions of it that will be discussed at future public hearings at City Council. So as far as next steps, City Council has discussed and has reached consensus to move forward. So the planning commissions recommend recommendations on chapter twenty-six will be forwarded to City Council after tonight's hearing. We do have a tentative first reading scheduled for the entire ordinance in early February and then likely a public hearing in mid to late February. And the code amendment really will allow staff to license and regulate short-term rentals and also to provide direction to city residents about the requirements. Right now, we don't have any of that, and this ordinance really will balance council's desire to invite short-term renters to Wheat Ridge, but also to protect the character of the community and its neighborhoods by instituting some limitations on the overall number and the overall number that a host can operate. That is all for me.
Thank you. I'll now entertain questions from the commissioners. Please remember to refrain from judgment either for against the this case. Please hold your comments of support or concern until discussion after I close the public forum. I will start with Commissioner Kearns.
Yeah, quick question, Scott. If a if a whole house, sorry, a whole house host has a duplex for a whole house and both of those units are short-term rentals, would that be allowed under a under this ordinance?
So we consider each dwelling unit to be separate. So if a host is living on one side, they would be eligible to rent out a room in their house, the side of the duplex that they're living in, and also rent out the other side that they own as a whole home rental. So it would be, they would have to live in one of them, and then they could rent out the other side, and that would be their whole home rental. And then if they wanted to, they could also operate, you know, have a bedroom that's rented out on their side of the house. And then that would, they couldn't, they couldn't have another one in the city.
But they couldn't just rent out both duplexes and not live there. Or sorry, both units in the duplex and not live in the building.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Disney?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions, and I'm worried, Scott, that they may drift into chapter eleven, but I know you'll set me straight. So this one plus one opportunity, is it one license for that or do they have to have two licenses? Their home and then they have a separate dwelling unit or is it?
Each short-term rental would have its own license, so it'd have a unique license number. And then I guess there would be one license that's for the whole home and then one for the partial.
Similar, just I may, because what we've tried to do is think about how parallels existing business licenses. So if you own two businesses in Wheat Ridge in two different locations, you'd have a license for each. So because each of those, the whole and the partial would be different addresses, we'd have a separate license for each.
Great, thank you. And then in the code language, section E, number two, if the scenario was that you know, there wasn't enough licenses anymore because of all of the licenses were taken up, and a new person wants to come in with and get a license, they the language says you put on a waitlist. I'm envisioning, imagining that these licenses are for a year. I don't know if I read that, but it's typical. If you're on a waitlist, you get bumped up to the top, you know, do you ever get a chance to get in if that scenario ever happened? Do you thought about that or is that strictly chapter eleven?
It's really up to who's administering the waitlist, and and a lot of those are really not ever going to be codified. That's more of a policy decision, but I think the intent behind the waitlist is that applications or licenses are renewed on an annual basis, kind of rolling, depending on when you get the license. And then if anyone drops out and surrenders their license or the license is revoked, that is then the opportunity for someone on the waitlist to get bumped up into. So it would be based on chronological order and and just continuously maintained on a rolling basis.
And then maybe just for context for other types of provisions where we have a cap. We're kind of compelled to say what we do when we hit that cap. And for other types of land uses, we have lottery situations. So for billboards, there's a lottery for marijuana licenses. There's a lottery that is actually more challenging in some cases to manage. So I think the waitlist may be a little easier and and certainly logistics and and resources was a consideration when we picked that option.
Absolutely, thank you.
Do you have any more questions, Commissioner Semaba?
No more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Crishoper?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. So I noticed, looking at the language of the proposed ordinance. See, my first question has to do with the definitions. I noticed that the definition of hotel motel and the definition of rooming boarding includes the phrase for compensation. But the definition of short-term rental does not include the phrase for compensation. I'm wondering if that was intentional.
I don't believe that was intentional. This definition of short-term rental, I believe, is the same definition that other cities, including the city of Denver, use. And the hotel motel and rooming and boarding were actually inherited definitions from when we incorporated as a city. So I think it's just when they were written and specifically transient occupancy, I mean, I guess it's it's more implied. And then if you go into what you're doing as part of a short-term rental, I don't know. I I don't think it was intentional.
I just, I I'm wondering, that was not, I'm not a, that was not accusatory or anything like that. I guess when I read the definition of short-term rental, I guess my question about that is I know, I think we all understand sort of the intention of what a short-term rental means. But is it your reading of the definition of short-term rental? Would that include, for example, if my parents stayed at my house for a weekend? I don't think that was meant to be captured by the definition of short-term rental, but does your reading of that definition include that type of situation?
No, I I think so. I think it's the the inclusion of the word rental in the term is probably why we didn't add it, but it's a good catch. I mean, there's no reason why we shouldn't add in for compensation because that's really the intent. What we're trying to do is license a commercial enterprise. I think it's a good suggestion that we make those consistent. We're always trying to be consistent where we have like to like.
Okay. So then I was in the, sorry, in under twenty-six, six forty-five subsection D. So for example, subsection two says a short-term rental must be located within a legal dwelling unit. And I it seems to me that that phrase dwelling unit is pretty consistent. But then I noticed in subsection three, right after that, it starts with the building or portion of building used as a short-term rental, and I'm wondering if that should match the language and be dwelling unit instead of building as well.
Yeah, I think we could. Building is probably the more generic term. Trying to think of a case where we'd be looking at the building and not the specific dwelling unit, where sometimes like a condo is within a building. So we're major egress overall is is compliant. Yeah, it's a it's a good question. I'd probably have to think about it.
I was just, I guess, is is the word building defined somewhere else in the municipal code?
I believe we have building defined both in the building code and in the zoning code. Yeah.
So that's probably a more general term than?
It's quite, yeah, our most umbrella term, we actually looked at this for a different purpose this week. Our most umbrella term is structure, and then building has a roof is what differentiate from structure, which is just something that's more or less permanent. And then I think dwelling, if we were trying to like umbrella these, it'd be structure, building, dwelling unit. So I think I think it might be appropriate to leave it as is because there's a little more consistency with building codes, but it's a really, it's a good catch.
That makes sense, I think, if it's the more general term.
Yep.
And staying in that in that subsection under in number four, I noticed that it specifically excludes temporary structures. And Scott, you talked about that a little bit. So I noticed, for example, I just did a little search on Airbnb this morning. And for example, in Lakewood, there is a recreational vehicle. It's like a forty-one foot recreational vehicle, it's two stories. It's like nicer than my house, and I'm wondering what that decision was based on to prohibit those.
A couple of things. So first, our code actually already prohibits residential occupancy of recreational vehicles within city limits. And so this was designed to be consistent. And then the rest of this line was actually borrowed from a couple of other ordinances. And I think it was because of a much more issues regarding code enforcement and neighbor complaints about like camping in people's yards and think like things like that. And, you know, we're not on the Appalachian Trail, so we're maybe not trying to encourage that as much. But it's kind of a mix between our existing code language and then borrowing from other city ordinances that were designed to have some aesthetic concerns in mind and and safety concerns, frankly, with with buildings and. And and safety concerns frankly with with buildings and temporary sheds and things like that.
Gotcha. Yeah, no one's, no one's.
Hey, I'm maybe just.
Asking to go camping in my backyard.
Well, so that's a, that's a conversation that we had, I think, both at a staff level and maybe even with council. And the conversation was as much also about equity, so we have people who are struggling with finding permanent housing. And we're telling them unilaterally that you can't live in a camper, you can't live in a tent. And it just seemed, it seemed inappropriate to say like, but you can pay to glamp, that's somehow different. And so. Felt like if we're not going to tackle, um, RVs and camping for, uh, you know, maybe more long term housing solution. Then it's not appropriate to say that you can commercialize it in a short term way, so.
Gotcha, that makes sense, thank you. Um, my last question just has to do, it's kind of two questions, but really one. Um, Scott, you mentioned that there's already. Well over a hundred short term rentals operating within the city we ridge. It, what's the plan for sort of rolling out the ordinance and is there some kind of grace period to allow people to? Get into compliance or you know, what's the, is there a plan for that?
There is, so the intent of the ordinance is that, um, it'll be rolled out and then there will be a grace period. We're targeting four to six months where everyone is notified that they have to get registered. And then after that grace period, um, particularly if someone's trying to get registered in a district that's already met the cap. They they can no longer obtain a license. So the the intent is everyone can get registered if, um, for whatever reason. One district exceeds the number allowed in the cap, that's fine during the grace period and then the cap is instituted after the grace period ends. So there's a, there's a compliance period.
Thank you for that. Uh, those are all my questions, thank you.
Michelle Larson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a follow up question on that last one, Scott. How will the city of We Ridge know? Uh, who currently has, um, uh, short term rentals operating?
It's a really good question. Um, so we have engaged with a a few third party vendors. That would actually be, um, hired by the city to aid in the assistance of this program. Um, and some administration. And so we're actually pursuing a request for proposals right now to find, um, a company. There, there are a lot of companies that do this where they actually scan the web and can inform cities and collect data. On all of the short terminal listings in the city and generally those are updated either daily or weekly. And that's something that the city, that that data the city then can purchase and, um. Then send letters to those property owners, um, letting them know that we're aware that you're operating a short term rental. You're not in compliance because you don't have a license. This is the ordinance that was just passed. So on and so forth, you need to get registered with the city and then provide information about how to go about that. Um, so that's probably not something we could do on our own. Um, it would be really labor intensive, there are a lot of companies. Um, that actually provide that service to the city at a fairly affordable cost.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I I believe that that would sort of be the uh, the first hurdle to uh, to overcome. I know. I recall when, uh, the city of Denver was considering a similar short term rental, uh, licensing structure. That they were, I'm not sure if it actually was enacted, but they were considering. Requiring anybody that was going to advertise, for example, on Airbnb, that they actually display in the advertisement. Their license number to to s- to sort of keep everything going along. So they, so when you're renting from somebody, uh, on Airbnb, Airbnb, you know that they are officially licensed. And, uh, they're following the rules. I don't know, for for what it's worth. My my question does, and let me get over here in a second. Um, has to do with, uh, the section on condos that's, uh. Um, that immediately follows the discussion about four dwelling units in apartment buildings. Uh, as you probably know, I am a member of the condo homeowners association here. And my question then is, how will the city notify? Probably the homeowners association that, uh, that there are three or four or however many. Uh, e- existing or, uh, uh, request for application in a given condo development.
Also a really good question. Um, we actually added this proposal in to the ordinance. Because we realized that, um, if you're going based on ownership and there's perhaps two hundred condos in a development. That the ordinance as written without this provision would allow each condo owner to operate a short term rental. And then completely wipe out any sort of long term housing. Um, this is actually going to be probably one of our biggest challenges to implement because we will have to be keeping track of each. Individual condominium development and there aren't that many in the city, um. But there are a few that have enough units that will have to be tracking those on an individual basis. Um, and then. I I guess we haven't gotten to the point, um, in our research about how either HOAs or, um. Owners associations or anything like that would be notified. I think it would be based more on an individual property owner basis. So if you've got four people in your development already and you're the fifth, we would then notify, hey, the cap's already been reached for your development.
And we, the city doesn't enforce any private covenants, so HOAs often have their own separate covenants. Um, often, you know, apartment buildings might as well, so. They can create, you know, like in my HOA, I have to submit for architectural review to my HOA before I ever go to the city. So an HOA can create their own regulations or just outright and say you can't have short term rentals by virtue of being an owner within this development. Um, so we would, you know, if the fifth one came in the door, we'd say you're not eligible because we know that there are four in the property, but.
Right, and this might be too much information, but I think the intent of this was to leave it a little bit vague. Because we are aware that most condo associations will have some provisions, whether allowing them in a limited capacity or their own cap system. Um, that may be stricter than the cities, so, um, we just wanted to.
Right.
Prevent against the total proliferation, but then otherwise leave it up to the individual associations, how to, how to manage it.
And 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 I appreciate that Scott, I'll I'll wrap this up. One other comment here is that the management association we have that we. Uh, the, we contract with to manage, uh, our sort of affairs here at the condo development. They do keep track of how many of our, uh, uh, unit owners rent out, full time rent out their condos. And this is, uh, typically required by the FHA, if you're applying for an FHA loan. Uh, they have, uh, regulations on how percentage wise, how many units within a condo development can be, uh, can be rented. Uh, the owners are supposed to report that through the management association, so. Um, I I am interested to see how, kind of how this shakes out. It is something that, uh, our HOA will have to discuss in our next meeting.
Any more questions, Commissioner Larson?
No, that, for now, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rantall.
Well, actually, before I get started on my questions, I was wondering related to Commissioner Larson's. Question about understanding how many there. I know this is beginning to seem like a management, um, challenge, but. Somehow through the licensing process. It seems like there's that opportunity to notify. The HOAs knowing that that is difficult in itself or HOAs themselves. Working collaborati- collaboratively with the licensing to be able to see how many licenses for. Airbnbs might exist within their community. Is there? I don't know what it looks like, but it seems like there is the information that tells you how many, how many licenses you might have in any one condo community.
Yeah, a couple of points on that. I I don't know if we've gotten to the specific how the city is going to administer a lot of these. Real specifics and that one is a very specific question. Um, I will say that unlike a lot of cities, Wheat Ridge does not have. A database of homeowners associations. Um, a lot of ours have been around since. Prior to our incorporation, um, and some have been solved and some others have been created. We also don't have registered neighborhood organizations, so it does make reaching out to those communities, um, particularly smaller HOAs really challenging. Um, but I think there is an opportunity potentially, um, with licensing to have. Perhaps a better direct line of communication from our licensing division and and HOAs. Not sure how we'll do that, but.
Yeah. The database that we have now, we can query it anytime, so routinely get questions, you know, where, how many marijuana? When we, when we were licensing marijuana, more often we were getting questions about how many and where they were. So if you called now. Or in twelve months from now and said, how many, are there any, um, licenses in this development? We will have, unlike some of our other business licenses, we'll probably have to have these mapped because of the cap by council district. So we'll have a a pretty robust, um, data set that we can answer a lot of questions for. Which is maybe more reactive than what you've suggested in terms of being a pro- notice to an HOA. It's just a question of whether, um, we have the data set of the HOAs. We definitely have the data sets of the short term rentals to be able to share, it's all public.
And and again, the the H or the 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 limit on short term rentals only would apply to condominium HOAs. So it wouldn't apply to a single family home development with thirty single family homes that has an HOA. This is specific to condo units in one building or or one development that's has common areas.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know kind of implementation or actual operation and carrying these ordinance out is. It's whole separate, um, kind of the administration process, so. I get that there are things to be worked, uh, worked out with that. Um, I do have quite a few questions. Maybe because in my own experience, I have seen kind of how different communities have grappled with this. And tried to figure out a way to handle it. Um, and I guess a lot of my comments are coming from the fact of. What began as this kind of wholesome grassroots sharing economy approach is now this multi billion dollar IPO. That, um, you know, has really changed the face of communities, um, particularly in popular destinations. Um, that we see in the Denver metro area and throughout our mountain communities. You know, so when I, I saw this item before me, you know, I'm trying to right size it to Wheat Ridge. But also recognize that this is a regional issue and we get a lot of spillover. Um, from our neighbors in terms of some of the concerns that can be associated with this. And for myself, kind of looking at this, you know, I'm mostly thinking about neighborhood stability, community. Um, protecting our neighborhoods as well as maintaining affordable housing. Um, and I think we've done a lot of great things in terms of trying to develop these mixed use. Commercial districts that, um, provide lots of option, opportunities and options for people to build community. Um, but I have some concerns about some of the things that this ordinance, I should say, maybe not concerns. But some questions so that I can better understand kind of how you've decided on the regulations that you have here. And, um, like Commissioner Senby, some of these may not fall within our purview. Um, but certainly may help give me a little more context. I wish I would have thought to review the study sessions because I know you all have been grappling with this issue for quite a while. Um, you know, so my first questions are really, you know, I assume there's been kind of a broad based research. Or I should say geographic research on kind of how other communities both. At a local level and across the US has has occurred to kind of say what's working best for other communities. Um, you know, and and knowing that maybe this is a distillation of what's most applicable for Wheat Ridge. Um. You know, but one of the questions that really is coming out for me is. Can you explain kind of the commercial district scenario first? Because, you know, Scott, you kind of equated it to, well, hotels are in commercial districts. So I was trying to imagine a scenario that's not a mixed use district where you would have a short term rental. And maybe I'm just not thinking distinctively, but could you just explain how that could happen?
I can, and, um, I I do want to let you know before I get into that, um, we have worked really closely with our CD attorney. Um, on this ordinance who actually was heavily involved in writing the Georgetown ordinance. And obviously that's a very different community, much more tourist, tourist oriented. Um, and then specifically in the local area, a lot of our ordinance, um, with the exception of some things that councils specifically ask for. Are borrowed from, uh, Inglewood, Boulder and Denver. Those cities have all taken quite different approaches to short term rentals, um, but there are commonalities across them that we've used. And then nationally, we've looked at cities that are, um, both pure cities to Wheat Ridge in terms of. Um, entering suburbs of mid to major metropolitan cities, so Milwaukee, Oregon is a good example of a community. Just a few minutes outside of Portland, that's a similar population, uh, similar demographics. Um, and similar kind of, not as tourist oriented as Portland, but still, you know, there's some pass through traffic. Um, and then lastly, kind of national models for short term rental ordinances, including city of Los Angeles, um, and city of San Francisco. Those are the cities that kind of have been the first and then have corrected the ordinance several times after. Because there, there's been around for ten plus years at this point. Um, so, so to your question about, uh, commercial properties. Um, there are some scenarios where there are dwelling units on properties that are zone commercial, um, C one or C two or or mixed use as well. Um, some of those are nonconforming properties where we've got, uh, perhaps a residence above a shop or something like that on Thirty Eighth Avenue. Um, but really these zoning, though, these zone districts are really only found on our commercial corridors. So Wadsworth, Thirty Eighth and Forty Fourth. Um, and it allows, I I think. What you're getting at is that most of these are going to be mixed use properties where there are apartment buildings on a corridor. And then that's the allowance, but there are instances where we've got apartment buildings in commercial zone districts. And so council felt the need to include those, um, specifically. It's not common. Um, and it's also not common to have, um, these nonconforming properties, but they're out there. And that's part of the reason why we included those districts specifically.
So, and there wasn't a mixed use cap, is that correct? Or did I, maybe I'm not remembering that correctly?
That is correct. So the cap is going, only applies to single family homes, duplexes. And attached townhomes, which are actually considered single family attached homes. Um, so, and and the intent is. Commercial corridors are regulated very differently in our city and other cities than a residential area where the predominant land use is a single family home. And so, um, the cap is meant to prevent the proliferation of short term rentals in a neighborhood. That has a residential character and we're not as worried about, um, proliferation on a commercial corridor. Because there would be fewer impacts, but also because, um, there still would be a cap on the total number of an apartment building. So you're not seeing a, an apartment building get converted to a short term rental, you're only seeing a very small portion of those units. Being allowed to be converted.
So that, okay, that piece is sticking with me a bit because, you know, can all these principles of new urbanism. Mixed use development, transitioning lifestyles, what it means to have a family. You don't need to have kind of the single family home with, you know, the back, big backyard, right? And so I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying you're allowing. So if I choose. Either to purchase or rent apartment near transit. Um, or near any of our mixed use areas, then somehow I'm treated differently. Like I could be subject to having a bunch of short term rentals that I have to live next to. Versus if I live, you know, in District Three where maybe on my street, we're all single family homes. I mean, yeah, and and I'm saying that just to be a devil's advocate, like how, how is that different? Or am I just not characterizing that target area well?
I I hear your concern and I, so I was trying to think of a good example. So the West End Thirty Eight Project. Um, at Thirty Eighth and Upland Street has about two hundred and twenty five residential units. And this cap would still only allow around the, the, the limit. On apartments would allow around maybe seven total short terminals in that entire building. So you've got four. And then you have, um, an increased percentage for buildings with greater than forty dwelling units at at a five percent cap. So you end up with a cap on your building as well, so that you don't live in a building that's got sixty short term rentals. And you have the negative impacts. There's still a cap, it's just a different cap based on the character of the area. I hope, I hope I'm describing that accurately.
I mean, that's a good answer and maybe I misunderstood then, because is it just mixed use within a certain zone? So the, the. It's within a certain zone?
No, so the. No, so the provision C1 is what creates the cap per building or property within, um, commercial and mixed-use districts. So I think that, I think the overall sort of direction that we heard from council is like, if somebody wants to come and spend a night in Wheat Ridge and spend their money here and get to know us, then that's kind of great. But we don't want that to inundate the areas that we need to protect the character of. And we also don't want it to inundate anyone given sort of housing stock. So the cap in residential areas is sort of, um, applied through that council district cap. And the cap in more commercial areas is applied on more of a property-to-property basis with the maximum being four or four units or five percent if it's a really big building.
Okay, okay. Okay, and you mentioned the cap. I just wanted to clarify, is that a two percent cap total or two percent cap for each district?
That would be different.
It's based on district, and the reason why council chose to base it on district, at least from what I understood from their consensus, was that if we did a two percent cap citywide, that could still allow for a higher proliferation of short-term rentals within a particular area. So when you do it by district, for example, East Wheat Ridge, so mostly District One and District Two, tend to be closer to Denver and have more walkable areas. And so are more likely candidates for short-term rentals. And the idea is to limit it equitably across the city rather than having a concentration in one area. And a, a citywide limit would still allow for a concentration whereas a district-wide cap would not.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense. Um, I just have two more questions. So one, I was thinking about the affordable housing perspective because for a while I did live in Northwest Denver and was basically priced out of an area, partly because of the market, partly just because of my perception of short-term rentals. You know, and there are a variety of variables. You know, but across the country, people have been able to document how, um, short-term rentals have increased rents and also reduce the number of housing units available for people. You know, and so I, I'm sure this went into your consideration. I see you have a restriction on not using, you know, affordable housing, things that have been designate, designated as affordable housing. But I still, you know, and, and let me sideline for a minute. Do, does Wheat Ridge have a percentage affordable housing requirement for new development? Or is that it? You don't have one? Okay, well then that's irrelevant. So then I guess my question is, you know, do you feel like the measure you put in place would help to protect about some of those concerns about driving up rental prices and housing prices? You know, and how have other communities dealt with that aspect with it, associated with that?
That's a good question. Um, I, so I think number one, the cap being in place is a start. A two percent is a pretty low figure. I know some cities are lower. Um, and some cities, particularly tourist cities, are much higher if they do choose to implement a cap at all. City of Denver does not have a cap on the number of short-term rentals, but they also have stronger provisions about ownership of the property. And, and it technically has to be someone's full-time residence to be in a short-term rental. I don't actually think that's very well enforced based on things I've done and my research. But yeah, so the cap is one, the apartment cap is another, and that would prevent the proliferation. A lot of our apartment housing stock is still in residential zone districts. And as you'll see in the code, the only exceptions to the cap are the apartment buildings in mixed-use and commercial zone districts. So if there's an apartment building in a residential zone district, like an R-three district, that owner, that building is only allowed one short-term rental in any of the buildings they own. So that's a really strict provision that would prevent, you know, a naturally occurring affordable housing apartment from being converted into a short-term rental because that owner of that building, if they own one building, if they own thirty buildings, would only be permitted to have one short-term rental total. If all of those are in residential zone districts. Now, if they're in the commercial zone districts, then they get the four-per-building rule, which is different. But a lot of our apartment buildings are actually in R-three zone district, which is not part of that exception. Um, so that's another thing. And then I guess the last thing I'll say, besides the specific restriction on, we do have some, you know, age-restricted housing in the city, but the last thing is just the one plus one. So we're saying as a resident of the city of Wheat Ridge, you get one short-term rental to your name. And then if you live in a building and you want to rent out part of it, then you get the others, so the one plus one. That really would prevent, you know, someone from buying up twenty properties, flipping them and renting them out as short-term rentals.
Okay, yeah, that, I mean, that is good to see. That's an important provision. All right, I think my last question for right now is, you know, um, based on what I said earlier, where this is a multi-billion dollar industry. And, you know, I'm just curious like what the revenue potential for the city could be if they actually impose some sort of tax. I know we're, we're still in the early stages and I know it can be difficult to regulate collection of that. But there are possibilities on how to do that. But did you guys or council talk about that at all and why wasn't that included as part of it? Does that go to licensing?
It is actually part of the licensing discussion. And there's provisions related to that in Chapter Eleven. Specifically related to, um, our city attorney has said that license or lodger's tax would apply to short-term rentals and also charging of a pretty substantial application fee, which would then in turn help pay for the administration of the program. Our current business license fee, I believe, is twenty or twenty-five dollars. And the fee to obtain a short-term rental license would be substantially higher. We don't have a cost that doesn't actually go in the ordinance, but there's going to be costs associated with doing business if you want to operate a short-term rental.
And what's the lodging tax rate?
Ten percent.
Wow, okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you. You mentioned that the, the host can rent out rooms in a house. Can the host rent out, say, like their entire basement?
They can if they're living in the building and it's not a separate dwelling unit. So if it's all contained within the same dwelling unit, then they, they would be eligible to do that.
And then, how, how do the short-term rental units meet, um, safety minimums that include, like you mentioned, the smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, um, inadequate egress, considering there may be bedrooms in the basement?
Is that question specific to building codes for basements?
Short-term rental, short-term rentals, I mean, it's, what, what I'm hearing is that there's a, there's a, there's a tax, a lot, you know, there's lodging tax. We're talking about, there's a permit. You know, the, and then you mentioned in the report about the, you know, that this is different than the bed and breakfast because you're not served food, and, and that's why they're commercial. But, what I'm asking is on a, on a short-term rental, when, if somebody is, they're, they're paying a, a company, like you mentioned, Airbnb, Expedia, they're paying a commercial company to short-term rental a place. I would assume that they would have some minimum expectations as it pertains to safety. And that safety would be fire extinguisher, smoke alarms. If they're, if the listing says, hey, we got a basement or part of the basement, how do we, what is this? And I know the cities are going to be doing some type of inspection.
Let me, I think I know where you're heading. So there's a couple other frameworks that we looked at. So we, you know, it's a commercial enterprise, but it's in a home. So we thought about how do we license regular businesses? How do we license home occupation? So home-based businesses where clients are brought into the home. Um, and then most recently, we talked about group homes and how we confirm that they're meeting, um, minimum safety standards. And so the path that we've taken so far with this, based on our own resources and similar frameworks in the city and outside the city, is that in this case, we don't do inspections on home occupations. We do inspections on commercial businesses, but not home-based businesses. For group homes, we require that they submit as a part of their semi-annual certification, a test. They like have to sign that they have adequate egress, appropriate CO, appropriate smoke alarms and fire extinguishers. So we're taking that route with a short-term rental. Now, if I were, if somebody in the short term, this sort of gets into, uh, that's licensing. So that's a certification that you would include with your license that you are certifying that you meet those kinds of minimum building code issues. But occupant felt unsafe, noticed something was crazy, they can, they can complain to the city. And that goes in sort of the demerit against them and would be one of the reasons, you know, if it didn't get addressed, that we could potentially revoke somebody's license if they were sort of a bad actor, as Scott said earlier. So we're, we're not at the point where we can resource inspections of short-term rentals, nor did we think it was appropriate based on sort of similar, um, procedures of when we inspect things versus when we don't. But it is a part of the licensing process and could be a part of an enforcement proceeding as well. One more thing I'll add, I guess, we, we talked about it as well from an equity standpoint. We don't do, uh, an inspection of anybody who's renting a unit or anybody that's moving into a new home. So, um, there was also a lot of discussion over, you know, we, we're, so we're gonna, we don't have a multifamily inspection program. And so we're gonna inspect a unit where somebody can pay, you know, or what, whatever that price is. Um, but we're not going to inspect the folks who are living in long-term rentals who may, who we know that there's probably some inadequate living conditions. So trying to sort of calibrate what the resource we would put towards this against how we treat other types of living or business enterprises was important.
Thank you. Can you, can you tell me, um, I haven't seen any matrices of how, say, let's just talk about our neighbors, Lakewood or Nevada Golden. How do they address max occupancy? And say off-street parking in their code for short-term rentals?
Occupancy is generally a building code issue. So there's, they're not, I, I have not actually seen an ordinance that I know of that has occupancy limits on a short-term rental. That's generally tied to the building code and would be in our case. So, you know, if someone wanted to do long-term rental or live there permanently, the same occupancy limits for a dwelling unit would apply as they would for a short-term rental. Parking can be handled, it's, it's, this is more of a city-by-city where it really widely varies. Some places really don't require any additional parking and some do. And in our case, we've kind of taken a hybrid approach where if a dwelling unit already meets the minimum parking requirements, then they wouldn't have to provide any more parking because for a whole-home rental, if no one's living there, then they've got all of their parking spaces that are unoccupied. Um, and if for a partial-home rental, obviously fewer people would be staying there. So they, they would still be able to use some of the onsite parking. But we, we did want to put in a provision because there are some potential externalities of short-term rentals. Sorry, there's a siren going by my house right now.
No problem.
We wanted to make sure that if a, if a property was deficient, that they would be required to add an additional parking space to the property prior to approval of the license. And we were tying to the approval of the license. So if they apply for a license and they're deficient, or they certify that they meet the requirement and we do some research and find out that they're deficient, they would then be required to add a space. And then they could apply for the license. And that just makes sure that, um, all of those externalities are avoided.
Okay, um, and then I have one more, I have another question. What are some of the past issues that code enforcement has had to do with in regards to short-term rentals?
So the, the, what we, so we haven't actually gotten a ton of, uh, calls that we're, that I'm aware of that code enforcement has shared in terms of short-term rentals. The challenge is that when they get a call, it's, there's a short-term rental. And that's not something we can force upon right now. So I think it's the discomfort with the transient occupancy. But there's not, there's, in, in the cases that I'm aware of, there hasn't actually been a nuisance violation or a crime. You know, we, we've said if, if there, if you think there's a short-term rental and there's, they're violating our noise ordinances or they're parked illegally, or there appears to be illegal activity, then they can enforce on that. But the, you know, I've probably gotten six in the last year where the complaint is that it exists, but not that there's a specific nuisance associated with it. And that, that again, we, we haven't been able to license them and we haven't been able to enforce against them because there's no code language as a basis, other than sort of, they've got to follow the same rules as every other resident in the city. So not a, not a real big record.
Yeah, I, I would echo what Lauren said. Typically, if we do receive a complaint that's forwarded to our department, it's that they exist and you should enforce upon them. And honestly, we just don't have the resources to do that and we don't have an ordinance to, to back it up. That said, we did engage with the police department throughout this process and kind of asked specifically, have you had issues with short-term rentals? And, and really, I, I think one of their main responses was we're not always aware that it's a short-term rental. And so having some licensing in place would actually make them aware and then they can make us aware if there's a problem one or if it comes up at, uh, the time of renewal, that we'll know about it. But nothing from them specific to short-term rentals as, as a recurring problem from, from what we got from the, the police chief.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commissioners for staff? Yes, Commissioner Kearns?
I have a dumb question. And Todd, you, you kind of touched on it. But how does the city know where the owner of a, of a property continuously resides?
We don't, but the language is specific that it is continuously resides, which means they're living there the entire time. And the only way that they would be able to operate a short-term rental is if they're applying for that partial home license. So they would only be on the application saying this is a portion of the house that's being rented out. I, I do think that's probably a bit challenging to enforce, but, but at the same time, that is a stricter provision than just saying it's got to be your primary residence, which is the approach that Denver's taken where you have to live there a hundred eighty-one days. And I think frankly, that's probably even more challenging because you have no idea where anyone is at, at a given time.
Okay, thank you.
And, and actually that language, the continuously resides, was specifically given to us by our city attorney. Because we were struggling to come up with what, what that would actually sound or, or mean.
Commissioner Disney?
Uh, my question pertains to the parking again. You mentioned, Scott, that when somebody applies to get a license, they have to attest that they have the permitted number of spaces. Does somebody go out and verify that? And then let's say you find that they don't and they have to put one in. Does somebody go and inspect and make sure they did it? Or is this all on an honor system?
That's a good question. So the application does say that you have to attest that you have the required amount of parking spaces. But as part of the application review, um, staff will likely be verifying that. And we have aerial imagery of the city from twenty nineteen and it's updated every year. So we'll be able to see, yeah, they do have a driveway and they've got a garage on the property. We can also look at assessor data to see, you know, what size the garage is and, and things like that. So we'd be able to verify it without actually spending a lot of resources to go out in the field and, and visually verify.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Larson?
I know the city, uh, over the past few years has, uh, kind of wrestled with the idea of the accessory dwelling units. How are these considered in this, uh, in, in this code change?
They're not specifically mentioned in the ordinance and that's intentional. We, um, you know, if there, if there was ever an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that came before you and then eventually city council, um, there could potentially be- Um, there could potentially be restrictions on um, short-term rentals and accessory dwellings. That's something that some cities do and others actually encourage short-term rentals to go into accessory dwelling units instead of. You know, larger dwelling units. Um, but right now, the ordinance has written for short-term rentals, just says that it's got to operate within a legal dwelling unit. So if in the future accessory dwelling units become legal dwelling units, then they could potentially operate in an accessory dwelling unit. But right now, accessory dwelling units are not allowed and so therefore a short-term rental. Wouldn't be able to operate in one because they don't technically exist, if that makes sense.
It, it does. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff, the commissioners? Okay. I will now open the hearing for public comment. If you wish to comment on this case, you will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. When I recognize you, please give us your names, put your last name and share your address. We'll now unmute all participants. Please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak this time, you may mute yourself through your own device. Is there any more wishing to speak?
We do still have one person on the phone with us tonight.
Please speak now before I close the citizens forum. I will now close the citizens forum and entertain a motion.
Um, before we make a motion, you know, Commissioner Kretschmer had a few um. Details that he mentioned that maybe if we make a motion, we should probably consider. Including some of those details. Um, there were some language. Um, sort of edits. Commissioner Kretschmer, do you, do you want to? Quick run through, um. Some of your thoughts on that?
Wasn't sure what, where the appropriate place was to do that. I, you know, I think the one that we. That I'd like to see that we talked about was adding in that phrase for compensation. The definition of short-term rental, I didn't, I wasn't sure procedurally. If I should add that in after there was a motion made or make that part of the motion.
You have a couple of options. Um, if you, if your discussion would indicate that everyone's sort of generally agreeable to that. Then you can make that a part of the main motion. The alternate is to, for somebody to make a main motion and then you'll remember that Mr. Dahl likes to. Say you're decorating a Christmas tree, so put your Christmas tree up with the main motion and then you can um. Talk about or make a friendly amendment to add the recommendation of that phrase so that um, we're not undermining the main motion. If there's really just an issue with that particular phrase. So. Either, either way, it would be fine.
Okay, um, Mr. Commissioner, I move to recommend approval of a code amendment modifying Chapter twenty-six. Of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of short-term rentals. Exhibit one is proposed Chapter twenty-six code amendment.
Did you want to add any conditions now or?
Um, and the, can it? Let's add a condition for compensation, uh. The definition of a short-term rental. Uh, which is. Under section D requirements, number one. Short-term rental owner must obtain a short-term rental license. Whoops, uh, maybe that's the wrong one.
Yeah, I think it's under that, what is twenty-six, one, twenty-three?
Yeah, you're right.
Section.
Can we amend this to say? Section twenty-six, one, two, three, proposed definitions, short-term rental, a dwelling unit or portion thereof. Used for lodging accommodations for transient occupancy for compensation. For a period of less than thirty consecutive days.
Is there any other conditions or is that, are you guys good? Okay, is there a second?
That's it.
Are we second in the uh, original motion or the amendment?
Both. Or we, or we can do, we, if you want, you can do just the original one and then we can vote on the, the amendment.
I'll, I'll second the original motion.
Okay. And then we will need to, uh, probably. Make a, uh. Vote on the amendment.
Mr. Chair, I thought Commissioner Kearns had added it as a condition on the original motion. And so there's just one motion on the floor. That's how I understood it.
Okay, just one motion on the floor. So Commissioner Larson, you're seconding the main motion with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I just like to, real quickly. Um, I'm really impressed by the proposed ordinance. Um, I think this is a really, can be a really, um. Or any subject, um, and I think this is a really thoughtful, um, or. Ordinance, um, will it be perfect? I think time will tell, but I think it's a really nice, um, development to sort of wade into this. This area and reasonably regulate it, so.
And, and uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, also uh, compliment the staff. For pulling together what appears to be a fairly solid framework to build something that, that will stand up over time. There are some plenty of details to work out, but I think you're starting off from a, from a good place. Uh, not putting too many um, restrictions or making it too simple. Uh, and finding that, that nice spot right down the middle. Uh, uh, again, compliments to, uh, to you guys for the work.
We'll give him the credit. For sure. And I think you guys should do more touting of all the behind-the-scenes work that goes into. Presenting this distilled version because it certainly reflects kind of a lot of homework on your part and I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Okay, call for a vote.
Is, is, Mr. Chairman, is this on the amendment or on the, uh, the main motion?
It's, this, uh. This was the main motion. The amendment was part of the main motion.
The condition of the main motion.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, give me just a second. Okay, next, the next item is uh, old business.
Uh, no old business, I don't think. Just new business for me, dates. Um, so looking forward, just a general announcement, the city is closed on both Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. This year, um, and then in terms of our meeting schedule, we will not be having the January seventh meeting. Um, but we do expect to have the January twenty-first meeting. It's a couple of divisions, I think.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions?
No, thanks for your thoughtful questions today. It is a thorny subject. It has been, um, a lot of work sort of on and off over the last two years. With two different councils, um, and Scott definitely took the lead on that. Um, this might be your first meeting with him in a while, but in the name of sort of touting our staff, Scott was recently promoted to senior planner. So that in his title, he just heard himself, so he doesn't have to accept the. Started with us as a planning technician and has been here for maybe four-ish years. Um, and his hard work on projects like this has earned that kind of promotion. He's doing a great job. So thanks for acknowledging that. Um, and thank you for another good, good year. This is our last meeting of the year. Um, and thanks for your flexibility and professionalism as we've launched into this virtual format. I think it's gone incredibly smoothly. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
No, I was gonna say only if we end with a holiday song, but.
I'll have to leave early.
You don't want to hear me sing.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't be doing any singing. I, I second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Have a good Christmas, everyone.
Holidays, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, happy holidays.